We'll call to order the Keokuk City Council meeting for November 6th, 2025. If we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Crenshaw.
Crenshaw, we have her on phone.
Walker.
Here.
Mullen.
Here.
Hackley.
Here.
Dade.
Here.
Andrews.
Here.
Tillman.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Greenwald.
Here.
All present.
For mayor's correspondence, Mayor Kathy Mahoney is out of town today. She went up to Ames, Iowa to accept an award on behalf of the city from the Concert or Concrete Association for Project of the Year in the state of Iowa for South 18th Street and the Road of Honor. So unfortunate she wasn't here for the meeting, but always good to get recognition in the Des Moines metro for something that we've done well. From the mayor, for her correspondence today, she would like to thank everyone that ran for the city council and for mayor. Thanks for putting yourselves out there. It was a great race and a great voter turnout. If you're on the winning side, get ready to fight for Keokuk. If you're on the other side, join a city board or commission. Join one of the many nonprofits that are out there. Let's all move forward from here for a greater Keokuk. Happening around our community this Friday is Main Street Keokuk Inc.'s Sip and Shop. That's happening from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. up and down Main Street. And on Saturday, November 29th, that's the Saturday after Thanksgiving, is Small Business Saturday. There will be a Toys for Tots Music Trivia fundraiser this Saturday out at the Elks Club. That is at 6:00. And today, we did receive a letter from Insight Health Systems that I'll share with you now. To our Keokuk community, reopening the Keokuk area hospital remains at the heart of our work at Insight. While the process is challenging, our commitment remains strong to getting the doors open on a rural emergency hospital with a 24/7 emergency department to meet the most critical medical needs of the community. Insight Health Systems is a physician-led network that includes hospitals and clinics in Michigan, Illinois, and Ohio. Across all of our locations, we are guided by the mission of making every patient feel second to none, regardless of the insurance or ability to pay. We bring a spirit of partnership and innovation to everything we do to strengthen the community's fabric of health and well-being. In Keokuk, our team continues to make steady progress toward reopening. Over the past year, we have completed facility assessments, advanced operational and regulatory steps, and engaged with local, state, and federal partners to ensure the hospital can reopen sustainably. We are maintaining the buildings while the process is underway. With staffing, utilities, and maintenance costs combined, Insight is spending a substantial amount of funding because we are committed to seeing this through. Each step we take brings us closer to restoring access to 24/7 emergency care in Keokuk. Rebuilding rural health care takes time and perseverance. At this point, we are seeking the capital funding to make the necessary building and infrastructure improvements and bring on the initial staff. Because we inherited a non-functioning hospital, the process of reopening is far more difficult from a regulatory perspective. We don't have a specific timeline, but we see the light at the end of the tunnel. We believe Keokuk's future is bright. The community's strength and unity inspire us. We are honored to be part of this journey, and we are not giving up on creating a hospital model that serves as an example across the Midwest. Thank you for your continued patience and support. We are fully dedicated to reopening the hospital and once again providing high-quality health care right here in Keokuk for the tri-state region. Sincerely, Dane Walling, Vice President, Government Relations and External Affairs from Insight Health Systems. We'll go to item number five now, citizens' requests. If anybody has something they would like to come speak on, please come up to the podium, state your name and address, and try to keep it within three minutes.
Hello, my name's Kyle Riddle. Address is 719 Boulevard Road in Keokuk. I'm here to talk to you guys a little bit about the disc golf course, making updates to the course. Our last updates were from 2005 or '06. And just to kind of get you guys started with this on this sheet here, it gives kind of stats on here, kind of talks about what disc golf is. Compared to regular golf, you have a ball in a hole. Disc golf, we have a disc or frisbee in a basket. Some of the stats on here talk about, you know, how many people are playing in Rand Park every month and how many unique players, like how many different players are playing there for the year. Some of the cool stats as far as tourism, talks about people from different states. And then country-wise, we have, of course, US and then France. We have people from France that have been out and played. All this information is coming off of an app, and it's kind of a limited data because there's people that go out and play, like there's Amish that I see out there. Some of the older generation don't like to have their cellphones out there. So this is kind of limited on the amount of people that are actually playing. As far as the baskets themselves, this is kind of what we're looking at getting, this here on this page. And it would be basically the same thing except for on our quote, I got a custom color. I asked for purple. Up here at the top, where it's yellow, it would be purple and white to kind of match I think that's it, trying to keep it within three to five.
Any questions for Kyle here?
Are you looking at Rand Park and the one over by the swimming pool or just Rand Park?
So for now, it would be just replacing the ones in Rand Park and then maybe taking the ones from Rand and putting in by the pool.
And what is the funding source for this project?
Um, we funded it through some of the park money. I'm not exactly sure what the fund was called, but...
But it is a budgeted item?
Yep.
Yes, okay.
My long-term goal of this, just starting with baskets, and then when we get things placed where we'd like, updating T-signs. And then there's a couple of T-pads that are cracked, so eventually replace them as well. So just long-term goals.
All right. Thank you, Kyle.
Yep, no problem.
Do we have anyone else to speak tonight?
Hello.
Hello. If you could please share your name and address and try to keep it three minutes.
My name's Mary Cecil. 507 Grand Avenue. I'm here for Keokuk Historic Preservation. So Keokuk Historic Preservation and the Office of Historic Preservation, along with Spark Consulting, would like to invite the council and the general public for an informational forum for our planning for preservation. What we're doing is we'll be doing a windshield survey of all of Keokuk. We will, will, any house, any property, any structure that's over 50 years old is considered historic in nature. So anything before 1985. Is that right? You just said 80. Yeah. Oh, yes. And so we did a similar project in 1985 where they compiled about 3,100 properties, the information. And, but now that it's outdated by 30 years. So we want to go back in and look at every property in the city and, you know, identify which ones have historic value. And we'll look back on the information that we compiled and that was compiled in 1985 and kind of, you know, make sure it's still correct, make sure, you know, like houses have, you know, houses have been torn down or how, you know, what have you. By doing this, we will identify areas of town that might be able to receive grant funding or, you know, areas that maybe need more, more help. So this forum is on Sunday, November 16th at 3:00 in the Round Room of the Keokuk Public Library, and I hope everybody can attend.
Any questions?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Mary Cecil.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mary. No one else, we'll move on to item six, the consent agenda. Consisting of the minutes of the regular council meeting of October 16th, 2025, a resolution approving a liquor license for Dr. Getwell's 1,100 Main Street Class C Retail Alcohol License, effective November 24th, 2025. Resignation of Robin McCray Davis from the Keokuk Public Library Board, effective immediately. Appointment of Stephanie Harrison to the Keokuk Public Library Board, fulfilling a term to expire July 1st, 2030. Appointment of Katie Henoch to the Grand Theater Commission, fulfilling a term to expire November 5th, 2026. Reappointment of Kate Blakely to the Convention and Tourism Board, term to expire December 31st, 2028. Reappointment of Mike Beard to the Convention and Tourism Board, term to expire December 31st, 2028. A motion to pay bills and transfers listed in Register's numbers 5504 through 5506. Take a motion to approve the agenda, including the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven, we'll consider a resolution approving the annual urban renewal report for fiscal year 2024-2025. Need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Each year, we are required to report on our use of TIF funds within our urban renewal area. Prior to submission to the state of Iowa, the report must be approved by the city council. The report is attached for your review, and staff recommends approval. No further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, consider resolution approving the purchase of a 2026 International Dump Truck for the street department. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
And discussion. Purchase of a 2026 International Model HV 507 Dump Truck for $106,175.99 as approved in the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. Pricing is per Sourcewell contract. Staff recommends approval.
Actually know something about it now, since somebody told me. That's a, replacing a 1989 dump truck, so the one that's replacing is 36 years old. This was one of the budgeted items that, well, it was a budgeted item, and this was one that was, looked to be funded out of the bond issue that we did earlier this year. The funding isn't placed.
With no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, consider resolution setting bid letting of public hearing and award of contract for Main Street and North 7th Street Traffic Signal. I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Plans and specifications for Main Street and North 7th Street Traffic Signal Project have been completed by Bolton &amp; Mank Inc. of Cedar Rapids, Iowa. I would recommend that Tuesday, November 25th, 2025, at 11:00 a.m. be set as the time and date for the receipt of bids for said project. I would further recommend that Thursday, December 4th, 2025, at 5:30 p.m. be set as the date and time for a public hearing on the proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate cost, and award of the contract for the Main Street and North 7th Street Traffic Signal Project.
I have some questions or statements. I tried to go on the website to download the project plans, but was unable to do so. The purpose for this project?
To replace the one that was taken out by a semi.
Okay. Are we including in that replacement of poles in a different location so that might not happen again?
This is being placed farther back out of the right, out of the right-of-way, so hopefully it won't be hit again. And talking to Brian earlier today, he mentioned that part of the reason this has taken so long is to get approval from DOT for the placement farther back out of the right-of-way so we could try to avoid this, while also keeping from having to put in all brand-new all the way around. They wanted us to upgrade to new lights, and we were trying to keep from doing that because that would have been at our cost. The replacement of this should be covered by insurance funds from the company that, the trucking company that hit this pole.
That was my next question. Thank you.
With no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, consider a resolution approving financial support for Great River Housing Trust Fund for fiscal year 2027. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do we have a second? Great River Housing Trust Fund promotes affordable housing in southeast Iowa through rehabilitation of owner-occupied home, down payment assistance, and development partnerships with private developers. For applicant to be eligible to receive funding, they must be considered low-to-moderate income households and meet strict income standards. The Great River Housing Trust Fund is funded through commitments from local governments, commitments from local banks, donations, and state funding. The money provided from the local governments, banks, and donations is used to leverage additional funding from the state. Funding from the city of Keokuk to the Housing Trust Fund has generally been placed in the building zoning budget, and staff recommends approval, approving the funds.
For those who have their council packet or those that are at home and were able to actually download a council packet, this is, there's a presentation in your packet right behind the resolution to approve that, I take it, Sarah, you're going to go through at this point?
Do you want me to go through it?
I think it would be kind of beneficial and kind of talk about how these funds are used and what the, what the reason is for why the council would want to be given this.
Okay. I'm Sarah Hecox. I am a grant administrator. I do housing grants for southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission, and we administer the Great River Housing Trust Fund. So every year, we apply with Iowa Finance Authority for funding through, for the Housing Trust Fund, and then we have to have a 25% local match. So over the years, we, with our Iowa Finance Authority funds, our local match, and then our leverage funds, we have brought in over $9 million to the region. So for the 2026 grants, we are applying for $477,000 from the Iowa Finance Authority. We need roughly almost 120 in local match, and then this would bring the total grant amount for the 2026 grant to $597,197. We're requesting $10,000 from the city of Keokuk. We've gone around to other cities and counties to reach that $120,000 mark. So our Great River Housing has different components to it. We offer down payment assistance, owner-occupied rehab, upper story, and then development and financing projects. Our down payment, homeowners can get 7,500 in assistance. This is a deferred loan that they would pay back when they would sell the house. Home rehab is probably our most popular component of the grant. We get a lot of phone calls for homeowners that need roof siding, windows assistance. They can get 15,000. We're seeing projects a little higher than that, so kind of 15,000, 20,000 is where we like to keep our projects. This is a five-year forgivable loan, so as long as they live there to the five years, it is forgiven to the homeowner. We get a lot of phone calls for furnaces. I know winter's coming, so we do those as well. Sometimes we can treat those more as an emergency item so we can get the family the furnace immediately instead of going to a board meeting. There's a couple examples of some projects we've done in the community. Some of these we've done just with Housing Trust Fund. Some of them, we have a federal home loan bank project, so then they get some money from the Housing Trust Fund and then a bigger amount from federal home loan bank. This allows us to do bigger projects, or the homeowner can get a little more funding. So a project in the presentation, one on Franklin, we've done one on Washington, just windows, gutters, some fascia replacements. The one on Timia, which just got finished up, the homeowner did quite a bit of work himself, and then we were, we came in and sited the house for him, so that one should be finished. Also, another component is our upper story conversion. This, the developer can receive 40,000 a unit. We like to keep these for four units, so the maximum they receive per project's 140,000. The developer does have to match this dollar for dollar, so they're, they're matching whatever they receive from the trust fund. So this is a five-year forgivable loan as well. The tenants have to be low to moderate income for the five years. A couple projects we've done in Keokuk, 619 Main Street, we, the developer received funding for the four units at those units. There's a couple pictures of some of the finished units. Also funded, 1114 and 1116 Main, this one's under construction. They are looking to do two upper story units in these buildings, so the developer's receiving 80,000 to complete those. Again, that's the five-year affordability period. We also have some development assistance for profit and nonprofits. They can receive funds. We like to do infill lots. I know Habitat gets, we've worked with them in other counties, and it's a good fit for those Habitat projects. We've done other infill lots as well with developers. And then also, the last one, the newest one that we've added is a special financing where a developer may be getting low-income housing tax credits, and they, they kind of need that final piece to the puzzle, so our Housing Trust Fund can come in and do a loan to them. They're flexible loan terms and can accommodate whatever they need for those other grants that they're receiving. The back page has the income guidelines. Every, every project is, has a different set of income guidelines, it seems like. So if somebody's needing rehab assistance, you can see where they fall in to see if they would qualify. If, you know, if individuals looking for rehab assistance, you can send them to our office. They can call, email. My, my contacts on the last page. So if we get too many homeowners, they might sit on a waiting list. We currently don't have a waiting list for Keokuk, so individuals that are needing assistance, they're more than welcome to, to call our office. So our request is the 10,000 from city for the 2026 grant.
Question for Jim. The motion was written with a typo with 2027. Do we need to amend that for 2026?
It's for our 2026 grant, but then we don't, it's a two-year grant, so usually we have the cities, they can put it in their fiscal year 27.
Okay.
So you can budget for it.
Okay, so our motion is correct then?
Yes. Unless you want to pay it before this fiscal year.
I had a question. We've had a couple of different folks who, and there's been some articles about the Iowa Two by Fours for Hope, the program for tiny homes, and they've looked at both Fort Madison and down here. Are these projects that would, is this funding source something that would be able to match up with that or no?
Yep. We gave them funding for the first house they built in Fort Madison.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So they're eligible to go forward and do that again, too?
Yep.
Cool.
These are state funds, so they can be flexible as well. They don't have the federal guidelines like some of the programs you're familiar with. And if you have an idea of a project, we can also look at doing something beyond even what's listed.
Just for clarification, all of these, as long as they, they fall in the correct parameters, like the roof, they got to stay in the house five years, all of these are forgivable at the end of the term. They, bottom line, the homeowner, as long as he follows the rules and he stays the proper times, he doesn't actually spend any money because it's all granted to him. Is that correct? On majority, on most of them, I mean, there may be a couple, but on most of them, this is actually free money as long as they fall in the correct parameters, they stay in the house as long as they're supposed to, or things like that. Am I, am I correct on that?
Yep. We have a program, if they get, if they use the Housing Trust Fund to match the federal home loan bank, they get like 20,000 from federal home loan bank and five from the trust fund. And then the 5,000 is a deferred loan that they pay back when the house would sell. But that's for the higher income levels. Yeah. Yep.
Is that a sliding to over the five years?
Yes.
So it's like 20% a year?
Yes. Yep. For the upper story and the rehab.
Okay.
Thank you, Sarah.
Any other questions? No?
All right, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, consider resolution approving professional services agreement with Stanley Consultants. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Enclosed in your packet is a proposed professional services agreement with Stanley Consultants' pre-treatment program. I have enclosed as background material the 2024 report of the pre-treatment compliance inspection by the Environmental Protection Agency. The report summarizes several compliance shortfalls of our pre-treatment program, identifies the administrative consent order issued to the city in 2023 as a result of violations associated with ADM and failure to follow the city's enforcement response plan established in 2016. The report discussed progress that had been made in correcting deficiencies in the past couple of years, but also noted that city staff associated with running the industrial pre-treatment program, and they specifically mentioned the IPP coordinator, which would be our wastewater treatment plant staff, were not familiar with our enforcement plan and the underlying regulatory requirements. The report similarly, similarly noted the need to not only get one individual up to speed on knowing how to implement this program, but to cross-train staff on how this program works. The agreement that is being proposed not only includes asking Stanley Consultants to take over the role previously performed by Ask You Scientific Consulting, but to also address training our personnel to implement the day-to-day portions of our overall pre-treatment program rather than rely on an outside consultant to perform all of the duties. This is in agreement with multiple additional tasks included in Exhibit 1, Scope of Services of their proposal. For a cost comparison, we spent approximately $33,000 on Ask You Scientific Consulting services last fiscal year specifically for the pre-treatment program. The amount is in a budgeted category, though the overall category for professional services may end up over budget for the year. It is budgeted for 130,000 but varies from year to year. It was 140 in fiscal year 23, 149 in fiscal year 24, and 106 in fiscal year 25. Staff recommends approval. Any further discussion? With none, I'll ask, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12, consider a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a demolition contract for two single-family dwellings located at 407 and 415 Timia Street. A motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
N. Discussion. The property at 407 Tymia has been vacant for many years. Code Enforcement Housing Official Barnes has issued violations and a judgment has been issued against the property owner. The structure has become dangerous and needs to be demolished. 415 Tymia has been vacant for a couple of years. The property owners are deceased. The property has been a problem with squatters, and the fire department has been to the property for a fire burning in the backyard, and in May, there was fire damage to the rear of the property. Due to the close proximity and possible savings for mobilization cost, the city requested that the demolition of both structures be bid as one project. Two contractors returned bids. The low bid was submitted by WNS Contracting of Keokuk in the amount of $13,995, with $9,000 for 407 Tymia and $4,995 for 415 Tymia. The second bid was submitted by Hilltop Capital LLC in the amount of 25,000. The property owner will be billed for the costs, and a lien will be placed if payment is not made within 30 days. Staff recommends approving the mayor to sign demolition contract. With no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, motion passes. Item 13. Consider resolution setting the time and place to conduct a public hearing on a request to vacate and dispose of platted, unimproved streets and alleys in Hawkeye Edition, City of Keokuk, Lee County, Iowa. Need a motion to approve. One second. We have a motion to approve? So moved. Need a second?
Right.
All right. Discussion. John Morris owns approximately 19 acres in Hawkeye Edition. He has requested to vacate all platted, unimproved streets and alleys adjacent in blocks 3, 4, 5, 6, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, except for 20th Street and Hickory Street in Hawkeye Edition. The city planning commission will be reviewed and make a recommendation at their meeting of November 17, 2025. So this item is to just set the public hearing.
So this is just to set the public hearing?
Correct. This is just for the public hearing, yes.
I had joined that property, and I didn't get any notice until 2:30 today that this was even going to take place today. They told me it was going to be the 17th.
That's when it will be. This is just setting the date for...
That's when they're going to decide what to do.
The, the planning commission is going to meet on the 17th. That's when they'll discuss it. And then what we're talking about is just setting the public hearing after that meeting for then the council to discuss it.
Okay. Did they, did they get the information from my, what I had proposed?
That's on the...
Pardon?
That's not what we discussed right now. We discussed that after the meeting.
After the...
Yeah, the letter, yes. I received the letter.
Can I speak about, then?
Yes, you would be able to speak at the workshop, yes.
Do, do we have a reason why this was requested?
Pam?
What was the reason why this was requested?
That's my...
What was the reason why this was requested?
We, they made sure that, um, he was wanting to, you know, a lot of the property that, um, and, um, we, we...
Can you turn your microphone on, please?
So, the, excuse me, Hawkeye Edition was platted in 1907. These streets are platted, they're unimproved. It's more or less just a field. Mr. and Mrs. Bickle owned it for many years. I think he had cattle out there. The only way you can get to this property is down Cleveland Avenue. And then Mike has some property that abuts that. That's why Hickory is not on there or 20th Street. We're also going to discuss here in just a little bit, vacation, the fees for the property. So, but yeah, he's just wanting to construct out there and...
I think when he first came in, he was asked, now, I'm speaking way out of turn because this is part of what you had said. He was wanting Hickory Street and 20th?
Yeah, he was wanting all of it. And since there's property abutting that, I told him that there was no way that it was all going to get vacated because it was egress to other property.
Yeah, there's a piece, there is adjacent property that that is the only access to, if you were to ever plat to get back to it. That's so, that is where it should happen.
That is where it is, yes.
Yes. Thank you.
No further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 14. Consider a resolution to amend contract number 24-648 regarding administration fees for Keokuk Pilot Rehabilitation Block Grant. Need a motion to approve.
So moved.
N. Discussion. The City of Keokuk and Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission entered into an agreement dated November 7, 2024, to administer the Keokuk Pilot Rehabilitation Block Grant. The current fees to administer, administer the grant are 42,600, which is outlined in Section 3 of Contract 24-648. Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission has exhausted the current administration fees and spent additional hours implementing the grant. A significant amount of staff time has been spent on attracting and qualifying grant recipients, including owner-occupied and rental properties who have not followed through with the program. Some of this is due to the 15-year affordability period. Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission have requested that the contract be amended to increase administration fees in the amount of $16,904, which include a deficit administration of $5,704 and an additional $11,200 to complete the project. Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission will continue to bill at $70 an hour not to exceed the total amended contract amount.
I love that when having a mic that the light doesn't come on. Mike had, Mike was planning on being here tonight from Southeast Iowa Regional Planning to talk about this, and he had a family emergency come up, so he wasn't able to really address this. But this is the, what's the grant number that this is, or the formal grant title? Just the, we had, it's a rehab grant program. We have done, how many houses have we been able to get through this so far?
So when we applied for the grant, this is a pilot grant, that Iowa Finance Authority had with their American Recovery with ARPA funds. So when we applied, we applied for a neighborhood, and we had individuals that were, that we worked with that were interested in receiving the, the grant rehab funds. And I can't remember what we applied for. It was like about half rehab, or half rental, half owner-occupied. Well, after they awarded it, the rules came out for the homeowners, and a lot of, a lot of people fall in the range of the 15-year affordability period, and that's based off the amount of assistance they need. So once they receive the 40,000 in assistance, it bumps them into that 15-year affordability period. Well, everybody that we initially worked with wasn't interested in that. So, and a lot of the homes needed that, that amount of work or more. So we've went through all of our homeowners multiple times. We did end up with six. We also applied within that grant to do two acquisition rehabs. One of them, we are completing another one. We, we wrote up the RFP and nobody submitted a bid, right, for Blondo?
1012 Blondo, yeah.
Yeah, so nobody submitted a bid. So that one was one we considered. Working within the grant, we worked with it. We didn't get the end result. So a lot of these projects we've, we've worked with, and then we have nothing really to show for them. We did amend the neighborhood and are giving the developer at 629 some of the funds. So we got an extension to the grant. Now it needs to be completed in March to allow him to do this and to complete our remaining two rehab projects.
And this is, I mean, you do rehab housing projects quite often in the, the grant programs, but this one, the grant terms kind of, they kind of drove what's happened with the loss of property owners staying on board?
That's kind of the feedback that, that we've received, that people don't want that 15-year affordability period. Most of our programs are five. So this one, and to get the five-year affordability period, they had to receive under 15,000, and a lot of these properties were well over needing that type of assistance, so.
So it's kind of doubled your work, effectively, from a staff perspective for trying to get people involved with this program. And it's, was not envisioned when you wrote the grant and, and put in your admin fees, what, what the extent of the work was going to be, just because of what happened with...
Right.
Where the rules drove people to be in regards to whether they really wanted to participate or not.
Sometimes when, they kind of, since it was a pilot, they kind of asked for proposals from the cities, and then the rules kind of came after. So some of the information the homeowners weren't aware of, because we didn't know of it as well.
From a city's perspective, we don't have a requirement to, to do this, to make an adjustment on this. Southeast Iowa Regional Planning is our partner, and I, I think the, the request makes sense to look at doing this, to increase the fees, just based off of what's happened with the dynamics of what this grant has meant. We're, we've spent, they, they've put a lot of time beyond where they're, they ran out of billable hours trying to help us keep this thing alive, to be able to use the remainder of the funds that we had sitting out there. They're a partner for us on this kind of project, and I, I think it makes sense for the council to consider the, the request for additional funding for the work that they're doing, but that is a council's decision. With the 15-year terms, I'm, I'm kind of questioning if it's still worth pursuing at this point. You've, we're, we have projects online to make this, to get that done.
Yes. Yep, yep. We, we've done six rehab projects, and two of them will be bid out here within the next couple of weeks. The two we are bidding out are rental projects. The six we've completed are owner-occupied. And then, and then we have the three rental projects at 629 Main Street, and then an acquisition rehab at, it's on, 120 North 9th. So those are the rehab projects, or those are the projects within that grant.
Prior to getting those last couple of projects identified, though, we were in a situation of what are we going to do?
Yes.
So I would say back in...
It would have been expanding the neighborhood and kind of starting over again.
Back in June, we were at a point where is this something that we're going to be successful at getting this all committed and done?
We were going to lose quite a bit of the grant if we didn't go ahead and try, you know, we, we did spend a lot of time trying to get some rental properties. We thought we had a few. It took, you get the landlords online, but then the tenants had to fill out their information. And that took quite a while to get that information back, and then they ended up not being qualifying because of their income. It was just, it wasn't as easy as you would think. Free money is, a lot of times has too many things tied to it. And people just are scared off of, of those red flag, you know, it's not red flags, but just something that, you know, they feel, they, they can't stay in that income.
Now, this is a project that was a $600,000 grant. It had a $150,000 match attached to it.
Yep.
So the city still has 150,000 we're putting in on this, and this would increase the cost of what the city is putting in from 150 to 161, too?
Correct.
We're paying for these funds out of, well, they're coming out of the Economic Development Fund. Now, that money, that's not like it's a pot that just keeps growing or anything. The only actual money that's going, I don't know where we ended up with a few hundred thousand dollars as, as seed in there, but the money that we're putting into that account right now is essentially what you're getting for nuisance collections are getting placed in there. So it's about 45,000 a year that we put in there. We do have the funds on hand to cover this cost. It's, however, the source of that funding, you do have to know we only have so much there. And as we look over a five-year basis, we do have to be careful what we're spending that on.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item number 15. Council liaison reports. Item 16. Staff reports.
Excuse me, I have a few things. Earlier this summer, Officer Shaw received the GTSB Award for impaired driving enforcement. When he received that award, since only one officer in the state of Iowa gets it, I had a pretty good idea he was going to receive the Mothers Against Drunk Driving Award as well. He will receive that tomorrow in Waukees. On the 24th, at the football game, we had a fundraising event where we had some well-known community members take part in a foot chase with some of our officers. I don't know if everybody saw, but that video had about 13 million views, which is kind of incredible for small community. So that was a fundraiser for our Little Red Basket, which funds our Halloween event, our first stop event every year where we give out candy on Grand Avenue. I wanted to thank those that were involved specifically for that event, be Drake Custer and the Teamsters who sponsored it and made a donation, Keokuk 12, Allison Dade, Roslyn Garcia, Katie Geltz, who is a teacher at the high school, and she's the one that took the video and posted it, the Keokuk Community School District as a whole, the community members that ran, Evan Prenti, Patrick Marlin, Brady Martin, and Seth Davis, and the officers that took part as well, Tanner Walden, Mason Shaw, Philip Dunlap, and Connor Marlin. Connor Marlin is the brother of Patrick Marlin. That's who he was chasing. Connor works for the sheriff's office. The other three officers work for us. And I also wanted to mention that in addition to our Halloween event on the 31st that we host, we participated in five other community Halloween events in the month of October, and it went into November when the special needs was on this last, this last Saturday, November 1st.
All right. Any new business? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. We'll take a short five-minute break, and then we'll be back to do tonight's workshop.
No.
Did you read this letter that was in here? I never even read it.
No, I didn't.
We didn't get it back.
Oh, you didn't?
None of us did.
He's long gone.
We're up.
It's not normally, it's normally emailed, isn't it? She didn't email it?
I did not see it. But on my, I couldn't even pick up the gin for the night, or, 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 wouldn't, or wouldn't download.
If you, if you tried today, it...
I tried to download the service.
Okay. I didn't know this. And I don't send it out either, so, but...
But maybe it was just my phone. I, I got me a new, different one. I told me it was better than mine the other night.
How you doing, now, sweetie?
I'm good. How about yourself?
Yeah. Did you get this on your phone? Did you get, on your phone, did you get the agenda down? Mine didn't come over home. I had my wife look at it, so I couldn't just say it was me not knowing.
Yeah, there's no
No, I got it.
It kept coming up. It wouldn't download. I don't know.
Where was that at? Oh, was that over here? This is, no, it wouldn't be here. It would be probably, there's an old, there's a house here that's a nasty. And then there's a
He might not have been able to
Hawkeye Village.
Yeah.
This is the
So yeah, so he's, in this, in this letter request, he is saying that he bought this property back in 1980, and he says when he was
I think Mr. Bickel had an aircraft hangar out here, but I don't remember our house ever being out there. There's, there, well, these are not even open. Now, this is a road that comes down, and there's a house here, and then, there's Cleveland, there's houses here. Yeah, there's, but this pine goes back in there, and it's pretty rough back in there. And then there's a really crappy house around here, and then back near there's a, like a
All right, if we could prepare for the council workshop? All right, we will continue with our council workshop for Thursday, November 6. Item number one, a discussion on street vacation fees.
And I'm sorry I didn't get you information quicker. So when John Morris came in to ask about the vacation of the streets and alleys, in his letter, he asked, he doesn't, he asked that they be just deeded to him, which we cannot do. That's not Iowa code, actually. You cannot give property away. There is a circumstance in the original city of Keelkuck that when those streets and alleys are vacated, it goes to the adjacent property owner. It's just deeded that way, and that's how it was actually platted. But if it's not platted that way, they're vacated, they're still the city's property. So you vacate them, and then you dispose of them, just like you would any other land. So in 19, I'm sorry, 2008, I did some research when Roquette was asking for vacating several streets and alleys at that point. I just, I had thought I had did a resolution, but I could not find it anywhere. So it just, a part of that letter, it just said, "In past workshop fees charged for vacated streets and alleys have been discussed, have not been able to locate a resolution where a set fee was ever established." In the 80s, it appears that the standard, there was a charge of $50 a linear foot. Sometimes in the 90s, it went to around 19 cents for, I think it's, I don't know, it said 19 cents was charged for open streets and alleys, and 5 cents for streets and alleys that were platted but never opened. I researched other communities at that time. Everybody's kind of all over the place. There really isn't anything set. And then I gave the fees to the mayor at that time, which was Mayor Gudjul, and he just came up with some stuff that he felt was fair. So unopened streets and alleys, we've been doing this for several years. Up to 5,000 square feet, it was 10 cents a square foot, and over 5,000 a square feet was 20 cents a square foot. And then the acquisition for open streets and alleys, it was 15 cents a square foot for up to 5,000 square feet, and over 5,000 square feet was 30 cents a square foot. This here, honestly, it comes up to almost 10 acres, the property that he wants to vacate. It would be around $40,000 on just the 10 cents a square foot. So it's over the, over 5,000 square foot, so it actually would be double that. He bought the property, I can't remember when that was, a few years back from the Bickels. I think he paid for the, it's almost 28 acres he actually owns out there. He paid around $75,000 for that acreage, plus there's some other acreage that's not in actual Hawkeye Edition. Hawkeye Edition, if you guys don't know where that's at, and I apologize, that's behind the Elks Golf Course. So the railroad tracks on one side, and the Elks Golf Course is on the other side. And then the city owns, the cemetery is kind of in the other area, and there's a closed landfill there. So I guess I'm just, I needed some direction from the council of what would you feel, do you want to come up with a square footage per, you want to just discuss it each time, we're going to vacate, to see what you feel the property may be worth, fair market value? I mean, buying the property, what he did is probably maybe $2,500 an acre, you know, more or less. I'm not really positive about that. I would have to recalculate, but because it's going to be coming back to you, and we need to have some type of formula.
I would, I would say that, hearing that it's over $40,000, does seem quite a bit, quite a bit much, in my personal opinion there. I don't know, from looking at a way to set it up in the future, if, if there's like a not-to-exceed type threshold that would be considered in this, so that, you know, we're still operating within state law, but we're also, you know, covering our expenses of the administration of the transfers and all that, too.
Administration fees are actually, there is a $200 vacation fee when they apply, so that covers, excuse me, staff time and public notices, that kind of thing.
Oh, it's, it's platted, it's never been put in, are there?
I'm sorry?
You said it's platted, but it's never actually been put in. Are there any infrastructure, plumbing, fire hydrants, anything like that run through there at all that potentially would?
The only thing that's ever been on that property that I'm aware of are cattle, and Mr. Bickel had a, I think he had an aircraft back there, and he had a, like a, something to put his airplane in.
They didn't even ever, they didn't even ever improve any of it. This was probably, like you said, 1908 or something, when they, when they originally set the place up, and it was slated to be a street, but they never did. So they've never done any improvements on it at all?
I think
That you're, that we're aware of, anyway.
I, nothing that I'm aware of. John has put in electricity back there. He does want to, there'll be a septic tank in. I mean, regardless of whether he gets these vacated, he's going to put something back in there. He's just wanting to actually put it more like on a, on a street area where it's flatter, and of course, he can't do that unless he's got this vacated.
My, my only real concern was if we already had something in there, and then we vacated it, now we wouldn't have any access to it, because it'd be on his property. If we vacated it, then it'd be, and then, like I said, other than that, I'm kind of in the same agreement with Mike, is that seems a little, little pricey just for basically vacating a street, but I don't know.
Yeah, we had kind of talked, we can't give it away. We're just not, you can't legally do that, but how much is realistic for land that's sitting in an area that's not really going to be developed at this point? It, I threw out, like, it'd be nice, the $5,000 figure, I don't know if that's appropriate or not. It's significantly lower.
Yeah, when you go back there and you look at the plot of land, I mean, it's pretty much not being used, and there's no way it could, yeah.
Well, then, I guess my suggestion would compare it to comparable ground. If I was going to go out and I was going to buy, you said about 10 acres, 10 acres of pasture ground, you know, we're probably, and I haven't bought ground with anything permanent in a long time, but you're probably in the neighborhood of $2,000 to $5,000 an acre, you know. And some of that obviously depends on what, whether there are nutrients, whatever the improvements have potentially been there. But I would, I would try to look at it more as if we were just purchasing 10 acres of, you know, pasture ground somewhere out in Lee County where we were in comparable zone, if that's what it, if that's what it is here.
Yeah, I mean, if anyone's been on Cleveland, it's just a, more or less a gravel road. There is water that goes back into Clay's property. We did vacate a section for Mr. Larry Clay in 2022. I'm sorry, I've got this cold, now I have a tickle. And he did get charged 10 cents, you know, a square foot. On his property, it was $480 for 4,800 square foot in the same location. Of course, he has a house right there, and that was a block that he was wanting to, so.
So what, what he's asking us to do is put this back to just about to the original plot of ground.
Yes, but right now
What we, what we went down there and plotted out and everything, that will be erased. He will pay you for that. Now, we got to decide what kind of price is fair market value for that.
And if the council would, I probably really shouldn't go ahead and do that. Pine is actually open, and there is a house that goes down. I don't think anybody lives there anymore, but there is a street called Pine Street, that there's a house back in there, so probably just leave the rest of them as is.
Does this block anybody, anything in?
Like I said, Mike Merritson, he's next on our list. He has some property that's down here at the bottom. You know, I haven't went clear down through here, so I don't know. But he's going to have to have some type of easement or right of way to get to this property here.
If he, if he, if he builds back there, then is the city going to be liable to put a street down there, too?
I would, I mean, I don't know that answer. I don't, I mean, I don't believe so. I know that other people have built
It'd be his property in here. He'd put it, build his own lane back there.
He'll have to have a septic back there.
There's no sewer back there. There's no sewer back there, right?
No, there's no sewer back there. I am concerned, honestly. I'm not really sure where a fire hydrant is back here. I think that maybe that needs to be, you know, discussed with him as far as, I'm not sure who's liable for that, but that's really not part of this, but I think that we need to consider that.
Yeah, because I have, I have been asked by some of the people that live relatively close to that, why we don't put sewer back there. It's money, but. He wants to be recognized.
We do have you down for item number two. We do have you down for item number two? Yeah. Okay, but yeah, if, you can come up, if you want to speak on the discussion of the fee structure. Yes?
Well, it's just, if you do vacate all that, that takes away access to my property, too, so I don't know how you're going.
It's, this is not doing Hickory Street.
Pardon?
This is not doing Hickory Street or 20th Street. If you look, if you have the map
Here, Mike, is what?
He had requested Hickory Street and 20th Street, and as, recognizing your properties back here, we didn't, we said we wouldn't do it. Yeah, but, but this, this, which one? Now.
So it's just right through your property?
Yeah.
Does anybody give me an access?
That's, and that's kind of what they're looking at doing with that. We'd have to look at, you want to look back there and what that ground is like is before the meeting?
Yeah, I, I'm not positive. I know that John has moved some dirt around on some of this.
Just to make sure that what, I mean, as he's pointing it out, it does make sense to talk about how that easement would impact where Hickory is, if that is viable for getting there, just with the, how steep it is.
Yeah, and, and we could just, if it's, if it's too steep, it's maybe possible to do 21st down to Popular, something like that. But yep, I will go out there.
But he can't block in any property, really. With what he wants to vacate, can't block out
Correct.
Anybody.
Correct. You need easements. Yep.
So Pam, have you gotten the direction from us on the topic of the fees?
I think what we'll do is, I will just look at maybe some comparable farm ground or pasture, and just see maybe what it's sold for, and just kind of come up with that. And, and we'll say maybe, I do, I did, when I was looking back, I have a document that I never brought to the council. It was just procedures for street and alley vacations that I think I will go ahead and maybe hear before I retire and bring it to the council, just so it's done, you know, and then maybe put that in there as far as council has, you know, we can put the fee in there, but also the council has the right to determine a fair marketable value.
Do we have to open that up for bed to the general public?
Not, no, not on street and alley vacation. If somebody else owned property adjacent to it, so some of the property up here where Clay does, half of it will have to go to Clay, and the other half will go to Morris, if, if Clay wants it.
So your fee, that you mentioned the $40,000, is only for the square footage that the streets?
Yes, it's about 10 acres, Dorothy.
10 acres? And what's the total size of the plot of property?
He owns approximately, and this includes property that's not in the actual, it's over to the side and at the bottom, which is not in Hawkeye addition, but he owns approximately 28 acres.
Altogether?
Mm-hmm. And then there's another 10 acres in what he's wanting to vacate.
10 acres of road?
Vacate streets.
Vacated streets and alleys.
Vacate the streets, so that shouldn't contain the whole 10 acres, that should just contain, our price should just contain the amount for the square footage that those streets would occupy.
That is what it occupies, about 10 acres.
That's, that's what we're looking at, is just, that's what we're looking at, is just the square footage of the actual streets that would be right now considered city property. He owns a lot of properties around them, and he's just, he's just wanting to include now the streets to where it's all seamless, and he doesn't have to cross city property to get to his other property.
Right.
I mean, over a third of his property being city street seems kind of hard to-
Atrocious.
Yeah.
Out of, out of sync, totally, totally.
66? 66 in each block is 300. Mm-hmm. And then the alleys are 20 by the 300.
I mean, if we're, we've been thrown out comparable to like pasture land, even at that, that's still at the 40,000 plus that he is saying he doesn't want to pay, so what we've been discussing isn't really leading us anywhere, then, if he's got 10 acres of street.
Yeah, I mean, if you just want to go with the 5,000 and leave it at that, that, I, it's totally up to you guys.
I don't know what's the right realistic figure, it's not worth the same as regular, when you have hatched land, you couldn't sell that for regular, at a regular acreage price. Yeah.
I think another thing to look at also is then, because there, I've also talked to people in this kind of gray area, you know, what will we invite in, as far as in, if we make allowance for one, then for many, but I think the 40,000 is a little, little out there.
Way out there.
So if, if we made it maybe half the rate that it was per square foot, something that's affordable for him, and still beneficial for us, maybe that's something that we could look into, because either way, I mean, whether you're going by the acreage, or by the cost breakdown per square foot, I think it's still going to come out to 40, $50,000, so if that's not something he's willing to do, maybe we could make a consideration for him, something beneficial for both parties.
I think that cost per square footage, or linear foot, makes sense on small parcels, you know, where it's, you know, one strip of alley, or something along those lines, but for an entire development division, it's, it's, it just seems not feasible.
I'd, I'd like to make a proposition that we offer to him at somewhere between 5 and 10, and just, kind of like what we've already discussed, and just make it, and we just need to come to that, obviously, the, the committee's going to talk about this before we actually bring it to resolution, and we bring it to a hearing.
The committee is just going to look at, they won't decide-
They're not going to look at numbers, right?
They won't do the numbers correctly.
They're just going to look at viability, but I, I'd like to see us do it capped at 10, no less than 5, and whether, you know, if we, if we do it for 5, or we do it for 10, or somewhere in between, but I think that would be, for all parties involved, would be a viable thing, because we're never going to, at this point, we don't, we don't have any projects and any, any plan of, of improving it, and there's no reason to hold him up, if he's looking at potentially wanting to build on it. I agree with Jim, we don't want to just give it away, but like Mike said, this is not just one block of street, this is quite a, quite a group of, so we just need to just come up with a number that I think we can all agree on, and be done with it.
Okay.
That might be hard to get a number we all agree on, but we ought to see what we got, and then come up with a figure.
Um, before our public hearing, and, and we don't even have to, you can just hold the public hearing, and then the next meeting, you can actually do something with it, but I will go out next week and walk around and take some pictures.
Yeah, because we got to sell at fair market value, and that might be hard to-
Okay.
There's a lot of variables in this thing, but-
And I can just ask a realtor to, if you would like me to?
Could do that, too.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, item number two is an easement request from Mike and Sue Merritts.
Okay, so Mike wrote a letter, and I have that in your packet, or it should be in your packet. His property's got an X there on it, he was wanting a, either an easement past 20th Street, or, which would have to come into the old landfill. And do you guys have that information? Do you have this? Okay, thank you. So, we just discussed this at a, and we, Brian Carroll, myself, city manager, it was at a department head meeting, public works director, he recommends, recommends not giving an easement through city property. He just has a letter here, and I, he just, he got it to me too late to put in the packet. Mr. Merritts has submitted a request for an easement across city-owned property currently utilized by the sanitation operations and material storage. In addition, the request includes an easement across the city closed landfill site. The property in question serves essential public work functions, and provides critical space for sanitation equipment, materials, and operation. Granted, an easement through this area would restrict city access, interfere with ongoing operations, and increase safety and liability risk. The closed landfill property is also subject to ongoing environmental monitoring and compliance obligations. Any new disturbance or easements activity could compromise containment system, monitoring infrastructure, and long-term site management responsibilities that could be required by state and federal regulations. Based on these conditions, it's my recommendation, recommendation that the city deny the easement request submitted by Mr. Merritts. Protecting the integrity and operational capacity of these city-owned properties is essential in maintaining public service and compliance with environmental standards. So Mike, if you would like to address the council?
Did you even go out and look at the property?
I'm sorry?
Did you go out there and look at the property? Because all that he put down there? Anyway, I don't know what you have there, can I see what you-
It's just this, Mike, with your letter.
I just noticed 5:20, I didn't have any time to take any pictures, or it's supposed to be on the 17th.
It will be on the 17th, with the planning commission, that meeting is taking place.
Right, okay, well... This is what would take place, it's not going through anything. This here, the city, the city has always used the Elks property, and the Elks have used the city property in that one corner, that's their number five, P. This road was always here, but it's not, it's not doing anything with all they do right here, has nothing to do with that.
So would you still be coming down 20th? Would you still be coming down 20th? Would you still be coming down 20th to get there? Okay, let me take a look. So there is a gate that's, Brian says- You would go around the gate? Yeah, I'm not, I'm not really sure.
Anyway, when I went to buy this property, we bought it at a city sale, and before I paid for it, I paid $3,500 for it, it was $500 an acre back then, 1981, well, that was a lot of money to me, and I asked him before I ever gave him the check, pay for it, if I could get an easement, and he said, "Sure, no problem." Well, I've been working on it, I probably had, I don't remember what I put in my letter, but I've been at least 30, 40 different times, been to the city, and they're working on it, and working on it, and working on it, and the public works director back then. Anyway, it never got done, and this is crazy, now you're talking about cutting it off over on the other side, so... I would like to get that easement, I promised it back then, and I would like to hold the city to that, and get it, I mean, that's the bottom line, it's just, and you can talk to the public works director, he worked on it, worked on it, worked on it, well, supposedly, and never did, and he did survey my, our property line at one point in time, but never got the easement done, I'm requesting the city to give me an easement. Pardon? Hickory Street could do it, if they would, if they would give me one of those alleys or something, to get around that big, that big ditch there, and get over to Poplar Street, I mean, it wouldn't take up any more of his property by doing that, but-
Uh-huh, 21st.
Yeah. See if that's adequate to get around here. Yeah. And there are streets there that it could be done, I don't know if they're alleyways or streets, can't, doesn't- Well, if I wait till 17, too late.
So, Mike, they're not making a decision this evening, it'd have to be by resolution.
Right.
So I just put it on here for discussion, so I just don't want to surprise the council with something, and then they have to table it or something, so I will go out next week and check 21st Street and Pop, Poplar, you could go down maybe Hickory, 21st and Poplar, if Hickory's too steep.
Or what I'm asking for, have been for 20, 30 years, at the same time-
That's, yeah, that's up to the council.
It's a cross landfill, it's not costing the city anything, they can't build on it, they can't use it for anything, it's just giving me a roadway in there, so, that wouldn't hurt either, but, you know, to put a house out there and vacate all the streets, you're doing a hell of a big favor. He can put a house on there anywhere, and still not have to vacate the streets, so, all right, anyway, I appreciate you listening to me, okay? God bless you all.
Pam, you go look at that, would you give me a call? When you go look at that, would you, Brian, give me a call, I'd like to go out.
All right, do we have any other discussion about the easements? Sounds like we are going to take a look at some other options for approach to work towards getting an easement set up for, for Mr. Merritts, and find a compromise that works for both parties. All right, we're done, let's go home.